Good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is the, excuse me, the regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment for the month of June. In the absence of the chairman, I'll start the meeting. The first item of business this evening is under all business. It's a request for a one-year extension of variances granted July 27, 2010, for property located at 190 Newcastle Avenue. We all have the letter in front of us. It's very brief. I'll read it. "I am writing to request a one-year extension for the variances granted at 190 Newcastle Avenue on July 27, 2010. I've attached a copy of the board's approval letter for your information. Circumstances have arisen that have delayed the start of this project, and I would appreciate a one-year extension on the approval. Please let me know if you have any further information. Signed, Nancy J. Radcliffe." Does someone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, or Vice Chairman? I'll make a motion to grant the one-year extension.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Any discussion on the motion? This is the first extension. Hearing none, I'll ask, I'll call for the vote. Verbally will be fine. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Extension is granted. That brings us to case number one this evening, six dash one. The property is at 345 Leslie Drive. Zoning district is single residence B. The project is described as to replace existing porch and stairs with a four-by-ten-foot porch/stairs structure. The request consists of two variances, number one, from section 10.321 to allow the expansion of a non-conforming structure, and two, variance from section 10.521 to allow building coverage of 29.2 percent, where 20 percent is the maximum coverage allowed. That was as it was advertised. The 29.2 percent coverage has since been corrected by the planning department to be 22.4, 22.4 instead of 29.2. So...
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Will I be voting on this particular case?
Yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are you, do you have any, anybody recusals? No? Okay. Yes, you will. Yes, thank you, Robin. Any, anybody present who'd like to speak in favor, please?
Hello. My name's Karen Staskas. I'm the owner of 345 Leslie Drive. My current steps are concrete with brick and mortar overlaid, and I don't know if you have the pictures in front of you, but the bricks are breaking, the mortar's cracked, and the steps are very unsafe at this time. I would like to replace them. There's a second issue in that the landing is only four-by-four, so when you open the storm door, whoever's on the steps has to step backwards to have the door open in front of them, and it's, I feel, very dangerous, especially if there's more than one person. In fact, I've stopped doing Halloween trick-or-treating because I'm afraid the kids are going to fall off the stairs. So, in that case, I would like to do a deck and stairs, and because the stairs are kind of very near the variance limit for feet to the street, I do not want to go any, out any further, so to make adequate room to open the doors, I need to make it a little bit wider. So, I'm wanting to build something that's four-by-ten.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody opposed? Any, anybody opposed? Yes, come up, please.
All right, I'm in favor.
Okay.
I'm a neighbor of Carrie's, and we have, we all have very similar circumstances in our homes on Leslie Drive, and I've seen some of the homes in the area be able to replace those stairs, and it makes a huge difference to the functionality of the front entrance and functionality of the overall property, and I also second the safety of having visitors, whether it's kids for trick-or-treating or anyone coming in through the main entrance, because right now stairs are all very small and not very safe and usable. So, I would certainly support that being replaced.
Thank you. For the record, your name and address, please?
Sarah Galant, and I'm the owner of 376 Leslie Drive.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, anyone else? Too far against? Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's your pleasure, board? Mr. Juice.
I motion that we grant the request as presented and advertised.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lemay, thank you. Mr. Juice.
Well, the key word, as far as I'm concerned, is safety, and looking at the pictures and actually seeing the steps, that they are, at least in my opinion, a safety hazard. And heaven forbid, if we were to deny this and somebody got injured on that piece of property, I think we all could hang our head in shame. Granting the variance is not contrary to the public interest, and it is also observing the spirit of the ordinance. Substantial justice will be done by granting this variance. Nothing has been presented as far as the value of the surrounding properties, and I believe that denying this variance would present an unnecessary hardship upon the homeowner.
Thank you. Mr. Lemay?
I'll just add that I think one critical dimension is the distance from the street, which is not changing. The steps are getting a little wider, which is certainly safer and more functional and a little more in keeping with modern construction, so it seems to be a good variance to me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other further comment? Any reason we can't have a verbal vote, a voice vote on this? Okay, I'll call for the question on a voice vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? No? None? Motion carries. You're all approved. Welcome. Moving right to case six dash two. The property is located at 120 Spaulding Turnpike, and it is the Nissan dealership. The zoning district is single residence B. The description of the project is to allow a tent to remain on the site for 38 days. The request is a special exception under section 10.440, use number 18.22, to allow a 20-by-40-foot tent to remain on the site for a period of 38 days following the date of installation, where 30 days is the maximum period allowed for a temporary structure. Who speaks in favor, please?
Hi, I am Jennifer Fecton. I'm the general manager of Port City Nissan. We've done the tent event twice a year through our manufacturer, and they've extended it this time due to what happened in Japan. They weren't sure of availability, and we're just trying to get the eight extra days to match with, with the, with the sale and promotions that they're trying to...
Okay. Any, any questions from the board? So, your net request is eight additional days?
Eight days. And I, there's a map here and everything you can see, and I have pictures that it doesn't infringe on pulling in or out of anywhere.
Yes.
Setback.
Mr. Juice has a question.
I have more than one, actually.
Okay.
It says from the date of insulation, what is the date of insulation? When is this 38-day begins?
Well, it's currently up, the tent, because we do have the 30-day permit.
Mm-hmm.
Which is why I'm trying to get the eight-day extension so that it can be taken down on July 6.
So, it's until Ju, until July 6?
Yes.
Right now, it's good until July 2?
Uh, no, June 27th, so...
June 27?
I'm sorry, it's until, we need to July 5, which would be eight additional days.
Okay. So, that was my second question, is the tent that is presently there, it's going to stay there a little longer?
Yeah. And I already have the permit and everything through the tent company and the fire department if the extension is granted.
Anything further? Thank you very much. Are there any others? Oh, I'm sorry, Robin. Ms. Russo?
I wasn't clear on your reason. Were you lacking inventory at the start of, like, May 27th?
Yes, normally it runs the month of May, and the manufacturer changed the dates of it, and they extended it a bit because there was a lack of inventory, and when they assessed the damage in Japan, we were able to get enough inventory, so they had extended it for that.
So, this was a type of sale that was, that came down to you, that the manufacturer wanted you to put up?
Yes, and I have their information.
But they weren't ready yet because they didn't have the inventory to supply?
They canceled it for the month of May. You'll see that we'd already applied for it, and when everything happened, they, they canceled it and then put it back up on the 27th.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone wish to speak? Too far or against this question? Last call for speakers. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Board, do we have a motion, please?
Motion.
Ms. Russo?
I'd like to make a motion to grant as advertised and extend for eight days.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a second? Excuse me. Second? Ms. Eaton? Okay. Ms. Russo?
It's a very simple request, and I cannot see them actually being in violation of any of the special exception criteria, but I'll go through it quickly. I don't see any hazard to the public or adjacent property, no evidence of detrimental property values. I don't see how extending by eight days would create a traffic or safety hazard. I don't see how extending eight days would be an excessive demand on municipal services, and no increase in stormwater runoff. Those are our criteria, and obviously, it's a very simple request, and we're happy to help the business owners of Portsmouth do well with their business. So, I think it's a very easy request.
Ms. Eaton?
I'll just point out that it was unforeseen circumstances in Japan that created this issue and delayed the inventory that was, the tent was intended to showcase, so I think it's a reasonable request to move the dates of the tent to when it really coincides with the event that they're putting on.
Thank you. Any further comment from anybody on the board? Okay. Any objection to a voice vote on this one? Okay. I hear none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? None? Karen unanimously. Okay. Thank you very much. You're all approved.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Moving to case six dash three. The property is located at 500 Banfield Road. Zoning is rural residential. It's the Apostolic Church of Jesus Christ. The description of the job is to replace an existing 16-square-foot freestanding sign with a 24-foot, square-foot freestanding sign. The requests in particular are a variance from section 10.321 to allow the expansion of a non-conforming structure, and second variance is from section 10.1241 to allow a freestanding sign in a district where freestanding signs are not allowed. Who speaks in favor, please? Yes, come up, please, and if you'd give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is John Bell. I pastor the church at 500 Banfield Road, and our existing sign has been on location for approximately 26 years, and the wood is starting to rot, and it's in disrepair. Needs to be either refabricated or replaced, and we have hired a sign contractor, graphic designer, to come up with a sign. I provided pictures for you there, that we believe it'd be more aesthetically pleasing to the community and further demonstrate our message and vision of the church and our church logo on that sign, and just wanted to modernize and update our appearance on our property. The property across the street is industrial zone, and a sign like this would not even require any kind of special variance, and I think as far as the community is concerned that we, we have a standing record with our neighbors and with the community, and we're not trying to be obnoxious or have some kind of signs that are really large and obtrusive. It's just kind of a standard to have a church sign in front of the church and let people know who we are, and we'd like to have this granted so we can go forward with our project and get our new sign installed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board at this point? None? Okay, thank you very much. Other, other speakers in favor, please, at this point? Anyone else in favor wish to address the board? Anyone opposed? Is there anyone opposed? Or is there anyone who wishes to speak? Too far or against this proposal? Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, board. Mr. Grasso?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented and advertised.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Russo, thank you. Mr. Grasso?
Thank you. The applicants in front of us, to replace a sign that's in need of repair with a more modern sign, kind of identifying the church, but the church is located in a residential area, and signs of this type aren't allowed, so I'll touch on the criteria real quick. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. I think it's in the public interest to kind of identify this church when you're driving down the road as to its location. There is businesses across the street that are zoned differently, and they have signs, and as the applicant mentioned, a 24-square-foot sign like this wouldn't even need to come in front of us. Granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance. This is a residential area, but this sign has been in place for almost 30 years, and the church has been there about that long as well, and it hasn't created a hardship with anyone to date. The variance would do substantial, granting the variance would do substantial justice. It would help identify the church, modernize with the current logo. Granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding property. We've heard nothing to that effect, and the hardship test on this is just that it's in a residential area, and the signage is not allowed, but I, I feel we can grant a 24-foot square-foot sign to help identify this church and its current location.
Thank you. Ms. Russo?
I'm not sure why freestanding signs are not allowed in this district. It seems quite reasonable for there to be one, and they're already existing already, so I think the hardship is that they couldn't have what they needed, and it was a very reasonable request, so I'll support this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comment from the board? If not, I'll call for the vote. Is there any objection to a voice vote on this one? Apparently not. Okay. Those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nobody opposed? Okay. Carrie, you're approved. The next item is, Mark Case...
Stepping down for that one.
Mr. Juice will be stepping off this.
Well, I know there's only going to be five.
Which me, yes, I'm gonna, which means that the board will be down to five, so I want to offer the petitioner the opportunity to go forward or to postpone until next month when there are more people available. As, as everyone knows, this is a seven-member board, and we're already at six this evening because the chairman is, is running late, so we could do, we can do two things. We can take it out of order, if that's a concern, or if you wish to postpone, that's fine also. All right? All right? Fine. Well, come, come right up then, please, and give us your name and address, and we'll proceed.
My name is Guy Marshall. I actually live at 27 Gardner, but the property in reference tonight is at 30 Gardner, which is directly across the street.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let me, let me clarify one thing.
Yeah.
I should, if you don't know already. You need four votes to carry. We have a five, even though the board is down to five, three is not a majority. The ground rules are such that you need four votes, so if that makes any difference in your decision, that's fine. If it doesn't make any difference, that's fine.
I'll go forward.
Okay. All righty.
My, my wife and I brought the property across the street in 1988, and we brought it from a gentleman named Fred Gray, who lives in South Berwick, Maine, who had owned the building for 20, 30 years. He was basically looking to retire and get out of the apartment business, and we were looking to improve, you know, our situation across the street, so we purchased the building. When we purchased the building, it was sold to us as a four-unit building. Tax card said it was a four-unit building. There were four tenants in it, four heating systems, separate heating systems, four separate hot water systems, and four separate electrical systems. We've owned the building, as I say, since 1988, and recently, we had decided to sell the building. We had the building under agreement. We were actually supposed to close within the next week or so. In exploration of the new buyer, who was going to propose to do some major renovations to the second floor as an owner-occupied unit, and the second floor is clearly the largest unit, he was doing some investigative work with the city in looking into building permits and so on, zoning, and in doing so, discovered that Mr. Gray had never gotten approval for the fourth unit, and much to our surprise, the real estate transaction has fallen through understandably, and my wife and I are left in the uncomfortable circumstance of trying to appeal for the fourth unit. Since then, we've looked into the history, and I've spent a lot of time in City Hall, and we've discovered that Mr. Gray built the fourth unit on the third floor at some time either 1979 or prior to. It appears for the majority of that time between then and now, there has been tenants in the unit. Mr. Gray came to the Board of Adjustments in 1979. I think there was a dispute with neighbors. That's what brought it to the city's detention. He was denied in 1979 based on the Gray Rocks rule. He evidently continued to lease out the apartment despite the overruling, and I believe at some point, the tenant was asked to leave for some period of time, and then Mr. Gray re-rented it out. And again, in 1999, 20 years later, there was a neighbor dispute, and again, it was brought to the city's attention, and again, Mr. Gray came to the Board of Adjustments, and the Board of Adjustments ruled that because nothing had changed and the Gray Rocks rule was still in place, there was no reason to accept, you know, his proposal. At that point, evidently, Mr. Gray filed suit against the city of Portsmouth and was to be heard, I believe it was in the year 2001. Just prior to the court date, the Gray Rocks rule was overturned, I believe it was Simplex versus the town of Newington. The Gray Rocks rule had been used in the past to deny Mr. Gray amongst other reasons, but as far as the Board of Adjustments of even hearing, rehearing the case. At that point, this suit was dropped, and Mr. Gray needed to go back to the Board of Adjustments in 2001 and failed to do so. So, we are now left in the precarious situation of having to appeal to you in hopes that we can keep the fourth unit, as it would greatly diminish the value of both the property, you know, in the, in the surrounding area. Should I go through my package of, that you have in front of you?
Yes, anything you'd like to present, please, please do.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes, Ms. Russo?
Have you been taxed by the city as a four-family?
Yes, and interestingly enough, the, the tax card, and you have a copy in your package, very clearly denotes in 1999 that there was issue with the fourth unit, and all, and in 2001, which I know is circumstantial, but in 2001, when the Gray Rocks ruling was overturned, it's not on the 2001 tax card. So, from 2001 on, it's been taxed, and clearly with no, no special notations, the tax card going forward shows it as a four-unit building. So, we never picked it up. We would never have picked it up unless we had to have stumbled into the planning department or whatnot.
What year did you buy it?
We bought it in 1988. Uh, excuse me, nine, where am I?
Yeah, your dates are a little...
Yeah, 98, sorry.
98, yeah.
No, 2008, sorry.
Oh.
Let's keep going.
Okay.
2008, so we've owned it for about four years.
Bought it in 2008. It was represented to you as a four-family. The tax card says four-family.
Right.
You're taxed as a four-family, and you have four tenants or four separate units, separate systems.
Right. And when we bought the building, there were four tenants, four leases, four damage deposits, four prorated, you know, rents, so it, everything acted as if there was no reason for us to question whether it was a four-unit building. You know, we'd lived there for two years. We lived at 27 Gardner Street, across the street, for two years prior to purchasing the building, and there had always been four tenants in there. I mean, in terms of, I'm just going through my package, you know, I've, I've obviously applied for a building permit. You know, I've been in touch with Mr. Clum, and I, we do have hardwired smoke detectors and all the things we need. There are going to be some adjustments in terms of self-closing doors in the hallways that'll have to be made if we're able to get approval, but some fairly minor adjustments. Unfortunately, it's fully rented at this point, and so I, you know, I'm in a difficult situation there.
Plus, you probably bought the property knowing the income on it was...
Yes, we bought it with an income stream. And the income stream supported the mortgage, and we got financing based on the income stream, and so on and so forth, and as we all know, that, you know, property values have diminished anyway. The only thing I have is the income stream at this point, which, which helps the building hold its value. Being in the south end, obviously, the, the rents are more desirable, we're walking distance to town, so on and so forth.
So, based on your experience, how long has this been a four-family, exactly?
At least since 1979. Clearly illegally, I, I, I'm at your mercy.
Presidents.
I mean, clearly, none of the right procedures had happened anywhere along the way, and in the two, you know, refusals, you know, understandably from the Board of Adjustments, both in '79 and '99, there was just cause based on the facts to disapprove that, and if he'd simply gone back in 2001, after the court case had been dropped, I suspect none of this would have happened.
And you have no reason to believe the code enforcement officer did not approach you or the former owner to...
Never approached me.
To dismantle that third unit.
Honestly, I, you know, I'm, I'm feeling slightly duped.
I hear you.
So, I, I couldn't honestly say with any sort of clarity as to whether the code enforcement officer had had conversations with Mr. Gray and whether...
Nor is it annotated in our notes either, that the code enforcement officer shut it down.
Right. And so, I just, you know, obviously, we're in a bit of a pickle. Parking is not an issue, other than the fact that we have ample parking spaces. We have, I think there were six, seven parking spaces. However, if you also see on the petition, I don't perfectly conform with the legal parking space. In a, in a second package, I provided, you know, pictures of the parking. We've got a two-car garage there. You know, it hasn't been an issue in the last three years. You know, and really, to have seven or eight spaces in the south end is pretty unusual. So, I guess I'm, you know, I'm pleading to you for two things. Number one, you know, a variance to allow the, what has been the existing fourth unit since sometime thereabouts, 1979... since sometime thereabouts, 1979, and also to make some allowances for the differences in the parking required in terms of the measurements.
Ms. Lemay.
I'm looking at the tax card here. And there's a comment on the tax card. This is from 1999.
Right.
And there is a comment on it that says, "Fourth apartment has been shut down for zoning reasons." Toilet and sink and basement fireplaces, I think that's what that means, are sealed.
Yeah.
Is it your application here tonight that the, because you got into a bad deal with the seller, you know, I mean, Mr. Gray clearly knew what he was selling you.
Right.
I mean, given the record, the fact that he had been ordered to cease and desist and so forth.
Right, absolutely.
A couple of occasions over the past 30 years.
Yep.
And then got together with a Realtor and said, "Here's somebody I can sell this lease to."
And the Realtor was, the Realtor was his ex-wife.
Gotta love that.
So this is a, okay, so...
Just keeps getting better.
And with, yeah, it's just, so we're, this is a, we're looking at this again, we're not reviewing that part of the record. Clearly, getting into a bad business deal is not justification for a variance. But there are criteria for a variance to allow this, or a special exception to allow this, you know, depending on which part of the application we're looking at.
Right.
So I guess my question is, do you have an application for that? Prepared?
My question also.
In other words, just because of the history is not justification for a variance, just because Gray Rocks was modified.
Yeah.
Essentially, what they ordered was that we come back and do it again. Okay? And that's kind of where we are. So we're saying, okay, we're, if we treat this as a de novo sort of situation where you get it, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the situation we're in, Mr. Chairman. I guess we should see the, review the requests and the variances and the special exceptions requested and look at justification for them.
Okay. Because I'd met with Juliette Walker, who sort of helped me with what language to use on the application. So I followed that language, which is how I applied.
So you're going to go through the hardship criteria in the variance request?
Well, there are five criteria for a variance, and we have a special exception, so.
Before we do that, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Lemay's question, too. I think that, I think we're reading off the same tax card. It's dated 4/29/99.
Yeah.
And under the comments, it says, "The fourth apartment has been shut down for zoning reasons." Toilet and sink and basement, I guess, I guess that's what it is. Something EPL sealed, whatever that is. Okay, but it's, it clearly says, "Fourth apartment has been shut down." So how, how, my question in the back of my head is, how could you, how could it be represented to you, and you believe that it's a four-unit apartment house, when it says clearly on the tax card that it's been shut down?
Because if you go to the 2002 tax card, it's not there, nor is it in 2003, 4, 5, 6, 7, and so on.
But there's no, but there's no, there's no link. Well, that still leaves my question, how could it be represented to you as a four-unit? Don't you have a problem with the Realtor rather than this board? If it was, is it your contention that this place was misrepresented to you?
It was clearly misrepresented to me. And I'm hoping not to get into a litigation in hopes that I could apply this evening for a variance for the fourth unit.
Well, if the tax card in 99 said it's been shut down, and as you say, the 2002 tax card says it's three units, how, how could you proceed with it?
No, no, no. The tax card in 2002 says it's a four-unit.
No, it doesn't. So how can you, how can you proceed under the assumption that it's four units when it's really...
Can I?
Three units, by the, by the city's actions.
I've got the tax card here for 2002, and it says number of units, four.
Okay, all right.
So it was a later addition? They annotated the tax card at a later date?
It's the year after the Gray Rocks rule was overturned, 2002. It shows number of units, four, with no connotation on it.
Right. But you, but yet you realize that there were four physical units there and four tenants. So how?
I didn't look at, back to 1999. I looked at the, to be honest with you, when we purchased the building, I looked at the, at the current tax card. The current tax card in 2008 had no indication about anything. So unless I had gone back to the 1999 tax card, and I'm not sure why I would, that's the only indication that there was a problem.
Okay.
Did your deed say something about land and four dwelling units?
There's nothing on the deed. I had title search, everything.
So you had, the title search, and all these, all these folks worked for you, and they all missed this?
Yes.
An attorney represented you at the closing, I assume?
Yes.
They all missed it?
Yes.
And the Realtor misrepresented it, if she knew it, which she sounds like.
She might have.
We won't speculate. All right.
So really, this is your last alternative to deal with the situation? Because you'd like to sell it, and now you've got any issues?
I don't really have any choice if I ever want to sell this building for even close to what I bought it for.
Okay. So your argument is economic as opposed to land use?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't changed, the footprint of the building has never changed. So in adding this fourth unit that he did back in 1979, he simply used space that already existed.
Okay.
So I've been in contact with the planning department. As far as they're concerned, nothing on the property in terms of water runoff or any sort of hardship, you know, exists. They don't need to look at it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Eaton.
I want to point out that we can't grant a variance based on economic hardship.
Yeah.
But I also have a question there. I've seen discrepancy in the lot area per dwelling unit required. Required's 3,000, but the variance that you have is requested for 2395.8 plus or minus. But then, the one in 1999 was for 2436 square feet per unit. But when I calculate it, I get a different number? So anybody got any thoughts on that? Is there, I'm wondering what the variance requests, why they're all different, basically? And I don't know if the...
I mean, you've got a...
Well, he said nothing's changed, so they shouldn't be different.
I didn't fill in the one on the tonight's meeting.
Okay.
What is the lot size?
It's 115 by 97.
Seven something.
So I'm assuming that maybe the August 18, 1999 request might not be valid. Maybe they would have tried to skew the square footage, but lot area 9743? Oh, that's why. I can't tell from the plot plan what the real lot size is, and this may be a non-issue, but because the original Fred Gray application in 99's got a different size on it, then would be 97 by 115. He's got it only as 9743 square feet, which perhaps was surveyed, I'm not sure, which is a lot less than 97 by 115.
I got the 97 by 115 from the city.
Well, it's on your plot plan. That's not a surveyed amount. I only point this out because 97 by 115, unless I'm wrong, that would be a 2788 about square feet per unit. But if it's 9743, it's a lot less. If we're talking about a variance, that could be significant.
Are you all set for now?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else, any questions at this point? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else present who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Come up, come forward, please, and give us your name and address, if you would.
Good evening. My name's William Jeffrey Bolster. I live at 44 Gardner Street, and I'm here this evening with my wife, Martha Lyman Bolster. We own the single-family dwelling just east of the property in question. I actually support Mr. Marshall's application of the variance here. My wife and I have lived in the single-family house long before he bought the property that is up for contention tonight, or before he bought the property in which he and his family live across the street. My wife and I have lived there for years and have never had any concern or issue with the fact that there are four apartments there. There has never appeared to us to be any sort of problem with parking, with noise, with hassles, with whatever. I know that sometimes people that live in a single-family home are concerned about multiple units nearby, but in the South End, that struck me as something that was sort of there. We all know that many of the big homes in the South End were subdivided in the Second World War into these multiple units. And I think that while, you know, as a former member of the Barrington Planning Board, I'm familiar with some of the procedures that you're confronting every night in these sort of circumstances. It seems to me that right now, the spirit of what's being asked is for this board to grandfather something that's gone on long before any of us were involved in public service, long before Mr. Marshall made this, this real estate transaction, which in some ways, some things were not really very clear to him. But it seems that if we ask about competing harms or problems here, that the situation as it's existed has gone on for a very long time without there being a problem. So I simply stand here before you as a taxpayer and a citizen and a neighbor, someone who lives in a single-family dwelling that is on a butter, and say, "It's not really a problem." And that right now, I just feel, you know, again, as someone, I've laid out, that the board would be, would be working a hardship on Mr. Marshall to no end. And I can tell you, I've testified before about historic preservation and all sorts of different things. I'm on the faculty of the University of New Hampshire. I just don't think that this is really a problem. And so I think what we're up against here is conforming to the letter of the law with something that's gone on for 30-plus years, as opposed to trying to have a situation that could be resolved without any problem or any harms to anyone else. At least, that's how my wife and I see it this evening, and that's the case I'd like to make for you.
Thank you very much. Other speakers in favor at this point? Yes, please.
Sandra Dyka, 333 Marcy Street. I hate to mention that I'm a Realtor at this point. It sounds like I'm a really wonderful Realtor, very honest. I just want to mention that one of the wonderful things about the South End neighborhood is the diversity of the types of people that live in that neighborhood. Historically, it has been a very diverse neighborhood. It's been becoming less diverse over the last 20 years as it has been quote-unquote One of the things that's necessary to keep diversity in a neighborhood is diverse types of housing. It would be awful if we lost even one unit of rental property in the South End. We have far too little as it is. Many of the properties have been condominiumized. That also is a good alternative type of housing, but we have very, very few rental units. This is actually, would be taking away a rental unit for the South End, since this has been almost consistently rented for the last 30 years. It's not a matter of intensifying the number of people in the community. It's actually taking away one unit that somebody could occupy. We have two groups of people who we like to have in the South End. One, one group are the young people that work in town. The other are retiring or older people that we like to keep in the neighborhood after they perhaps have sold their single-family residence. I think one of the things that is very important to understand about the South End is that it was subdivided originally in the 1700s, and there was, these were very small lots. There was a good density of population. And our, our modern zoning rules really preclude the kind of density that was originally, the neighborhood was originally designed for. So in some sense, I don't think a little increase in density would hurt the South End. I think it actually would help the South End. At any rate, I hope that you will allow this variance and the special exception. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other speakers at this point in favor? Anyone else in favor wishing to speak? Is there anyone wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, come up, please, sir.
Ms. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Hugh Jenks. I have the pleasure of both living and working in the city of Portsmouth. My residence for the past 15 years has been at 25 Hunkings Street in the South End. As such, I am a direct abutter to the rear of the property at 30 Gardner. Mr. Chairman, it's never pleasant to be put in the position of having to defend the city's zoning ordinance against the wishes of a neighbor. And believe me, I appreciate the time and effort on your part that goes into balancing the requirements of the law against the unrestricted use of one's property. I will try to be brief and limit this to about six minutes. One of the primary land use objectives of the zoning ordinance is to prevent overcrowding on the land. In a neighborhood such as ours, the most closely built in the city, as the previous speaker just indicated, this is a critical element of the law and one that clearly arises from the public interest. The requirement in Portsmouth that each dwelling unit in the general residence B zone be situated on at least 3,000 square feet of land is an expression of the spirit and intent of the law to prevent overcrowding. The applicant's request for relief from the overcrowding provisions of the zoning law as it applies to lot size and parking space thus contradicts the spirit and the intent of the ordinance that everyone else in the neighborhood must live by. To make matters worse, the property has already been altered in violation of the law, and now the applicant seeks retroactive sanction from this board for the illegal condition of his building. Mr. Chairman, to meet his burden of proof for the variances requested under the new Simplex standard, the applicant must show that the zoning ordinance interferes with the reasonable use of the property. Likewise, the courts require that the burden must arise from the property and not from the individual plight of the landowner. I'm quoting there from Garrison versus Henneker, which was a 2006 case. There are clearly some financial problems at 30 Gardner Street, but they are not a hardship that arises from the unique setting of the property and its environment imposing hardship on that property alone. There is no physical characteristic of the lot that sets it apart from any other in the neighborhood that makes a variance necessary. Mr. Chairman, I suggest to the board that the city's zoning restrictions do not interfere with the reasonable use of the property under the statute, and therefore that the variance request should be rejected. Citing a 2004 decision in the case of Bacon versus Enfield, New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Supreme Court ruled that land use boards and the courts, quote, "will not grant a variance merely to avoid negative financial impact to the owner." Finally, Mr. Chairman, I would point out that this is my second appearance before this board on the subject of variances authorizing the continued occupancy of an illegal apartment in this building. The last time was 1999, when the previous owner was discovered to have removed the caps installed on the sewer and water service in the apartment by city order, when a previous illegal tenant had been discovered. As is the case tonight, the landlord petitioned the BOA to allow the illegally-built apartment to remain by granting variances as to parking and lot size requirements for the property. At that time, rightly, in my opinion, the board denied the grant of the variances and required the removal of the offending apartment, just as it had in 1979, when the illegal construction and occupancy had first been discovered. The 1979 variance requests, which were turned down, were the very same variance requests which were submitted again in 1999 and turned down. variance requests which were submitted again in nineteen ninety-nine and turned down, which are the very same requests which the applicant has submitted again tonight. About the same time that the first of these variance requests was brought forward by thirty Gardner Street in nineteen eighty, the courts ruled in the case of Fisher versus City of Dover, I'm just going to quote a short passage here. "If a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of a zoning variance has not occurred, or if the application is not a use that materially differs in nature and degree from its predecessor, the Board of Adjustment may not hear the merits of the petition. Otherwise, there would be no finality to the proceedings before the board. The integrity of the zoning plan would be threatened, and undue burden would be placed on property owners seeking to uphold the zoning plan. We hold that the board committed an error of law when it approved a second application for a variance without first finding either that a material change occurred, or that the second application was for a use that materially differed in nature and degree from the use previously applied for and denied by the board. Mr. Chairman, I request that there be finality to the proceedings of this property before the board, that the integrity of the zoning plan be upheld, and that the burden placed on property owners seeking to uphold the zoning laws be removed by a motion denying the applicant's petition for these repetitive variances." Thank you. I'd be happy to address any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Anything for Mr. Jenks? Yes, Ms. Russo.
Can you remind me what street you live on?
Hunking.
Hunking, right. And that's parallel to Gardner?
Yes.
Is that right? So your front door is on the other side, and Gardner is in back of you, is that right?
Yeah, we share a property line in the back.
Right. So you don't even live on the same street as this applicant, correct?
Excuse me, he's a direct abutter.
He's my rear neighbor.
So, but you don't live on the same street? Is that correct?
Correct. I'm a direct abutter.
Has the tenants in that property ever bothered you in any way?
Yes. There was a pit bull that lived in the back apartment that jumped over a five-foot picket fence and attacked my dog. And there was a garage band, this is both before the applicant bought the property in two thousand and eight, there was a garage band that tried to soundproof the garage and had practice at one AM on Sunday nights in the garage, which is two feet from my property line.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the speaker at this point? Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to let the applicant know that you'll have an opportunity to respond, and at that time, I'm going to invite you to address the criteria, as Mr. Lemay alluded to, that need to be addressed for what's in front of us this evening, as opposed to the history, which is interesting, but not the bases on which we must make the decisions. So I just want to let you know that, so you can be prepared. Are there any other speakers in opposition? Anybody? Yes, come, excuse me. Sorry, allergies are a killer. Come up, please. And you name an address, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Forkell. I live at two-fifty-two Marcy Street, and I will be very brief. I have two concerns. One is the conformity of the spirit of the law, which, by whatever measure we go by, is a fairly material miss, as far as the size. The second I have concerns with would be setting a precedent by which any other property in the South End could then leverage to ask for similar variances. And while I do have a great deal of empathy for Mr. Marshall, I mean, I understand the circumstances, and I feel bad for the man personally, I'm concerned that with the attractiveness of the South End, and with the attractive rents that additional apartments could generate, that we could be in danger of setting a precedent that could severely overcrowd my neighborhood. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others, any other speakers? Last call? Anybody else? Too far or against, before I invite the applicant to address this again, if he wishes to? Any, anybody else? Okay. Mr. Marshall, do you wish to come up and address the five criteria by which we must judge the application? Because I don't think, earlier, with all the discussion of the history, that we really got to those points. Do you?
Does he have a list?
Do you want to speak in front? No. All right. No, I mean the gentleman in front. Yeah?
I was just trying to clarify.
Okay, okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you. Mr. Marshall, you don't wish to address this on the, okay. Oh, no, that's fair enough. No requirement to do so. Okay. Anybody else? Last call for speakers on this question. Last call. Okay. Seeing no one rise, I'm closing the public hearing. Okay. What is your desire on this? Someone have a motion to stop the conversation?
I have a comment.
All right.
I just want to comment that I think Fisher wasn't invoked because of the Gray Rule changing, correct? Just to clarify why we're actually hearing this, because I think it's absolutely true. It's a third request for the same variance. It's just that there was a legal technical change that allowed this to come forward.
Yeah. And also, as a common-sense sort of matter, this is a new owner, so, even though the Fisher versus Dover is often invoked, it's usually with respect to the same owner coming back a second time. So I think that's a factor also. So, anybody on the board want to make a motion, and we can start our deliberation?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Russo?
I'll start with the variance request. There's two variances here, and I think I can speak to both variance requests and go through their criteria. The criteria, I think, I want to start with the hardship, which is the fifth.
Which, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. A motion to accept.
You're skipping over the special exception?
I'm gonna, right.
Which variance do you wish to address?
I want to address both, and I'll speak to both with the criteria.
Okay.
Because I would like to request that both are granted as advertised.
You, your motion is to grant both variances, okay. Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grasso.
I wanted to start with the hardship criteria. I'm starting with the hardship criteria, because I don't think the applicant was probably coached that he needed to show up tonight with very specific, and addressing these very specifically, these criteria. And I can see that there are special conditions with this property. And I'm not talking about the income situation. Clearly, there are issues with misrepresentation of this property, but those we cannot address with this variance criteria. I really did take into consideration the neighbors, who was a real estate broker, bringing out the special conditions that this is rare rental housing property in that neighborhood. And I agree with her position that we would like to maintain rental housing in that neighborhood. So this property is unlike others in the neighborhood in that it is a multifamily, because I don't believe there are many like this in that neighborhood. So there are special conditions. It is a rare four-family, or three-to-four-family, right now in that neighborhood. And I think the general purpose of the ordinance in looking at the lot area per dwelling unit, which it's to allow two thousand three hundred and ninety-five square feet, where three thousand is required, I don't think that's an extreme request to allow for a dwelling unit with two thousand three ninety-five, rather than three thousand. I do not think that that's really an extreme variance request and could make the property owner whole and allow for reasonable use of that property. And also, the specified parking spaces as well, as far as the hardship criteria, that those parking spaces, there has not been any report of any issues historically at that property regarding parking. And it appears to me that there is a reasonable amount of space for four units, four tenants to park in that lot. I've seen that property and looked at the photographs. I don't think that there's an issue with parking in any way. So I think the request is reasonable to accommodate the units, four units, in that building. So I think this particular property owner meets the hardship criteria, because there are special conditions, because this particular property does not reflect the other properties in the neighborhood one-on-one. So we have to look at it as a special case, and it is a special case. And I think by allowing the variance, it would give this particular owner reasonable use of the property that's been used in this way for quite some time, and to make him whole. And I think we owe it to our neighbors to allow for that. I do not, I did not see any evidence presented tonight by any parties that would indicate that there would be, that by allowing for units that already exist there today would diminish the values of the surrounding properties. I saw no evidence to that effect tonight, nor do I believe that that would be true. And I do believe that granting the variance would do substantial justice to the property owner, to make them whole, make the city whole, and to allow this to move forward in the way it probably has been all along, and to just get this situation correct. And I do not think that it would do any of the neighbors any harm to allow for this variance and give this property owner substantial justice. Granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance, which is a reasonable amount of space for a dwelling unit, and reasonable amount of parking spaces for a dwelling unit. That was the intent and spirit of the ordinance, and I cannot see that there's any evidence that the four units would in any way infringe on the spirit of the ordinance, or the parking spaces would be a burden to the neighborhood. So I think that it definitely passes that variance criteria. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. I cannot see, since this has been going on for years, that the public interest would be affected in any way. The same services would be used, town services, water, sewer, fire. There's no public interest that I can see that it would be, there would be any infringement in any way. So I think that this particular request pass on all five criteria for the two variance requests, and I request that it move forward.
Mr. Grasso.
Thank you. I second it for discussion. I won't be supporting the motion. I have a problem with the hardship test and the spirit of the ordinance. To analyze this application, I have to look at it as a three-unit building with a request for a fourth unit. Can the applicant enjoy the property as a three-unit? Yes. Is it allowed? Yes. To get the fourth unit, he needs a variance. And I fail to see any hardship he presented that would lead me to grant the variance. The spirit of the ordinance, by granting this variance, we're getting away from conformity and moving more towards non-conformity. So those two fail in my mind, and I will not support the motion.
Anyone else? Ms. Eaton?
I won't support the motion either, for similar reasons. I see that there are no special conditions on this property. It's been adding, and I think, for one thing, allowing a fourth unit or a three-unit is the maximum allowed, could diminish the property values because of the overcrowding in the area of a very crowded street with inadequate parking already there. It's extremely dense, and this has already been considered twice previously, and been denied by this board. And I don't see the hardship. Unfortunately, I feel for the property owner, but we cannot grant variances for economic hardship bidders, and we are bound to follow what the variance criteria are.
Anyone else? Any final thoughts before I call? Yes, Ms. Russo?
In criteria number four, the hardship test, the word reasonable keeps coming up. Reasonable use, reasonable use. Proposed use is a reasonable one. Necessary to enable reasonable use of the property. I think to ask a property owner who has four perfectly working, operating rental units, to ask that person to now take three rental units instead would be extremely unreasonable request of that property owner. To take one unit out of operation, and this person was not representing to us that he has run, as other applicants in the past have represented to us, that he had an illegal unit, and it's always been that way, and, well, now, okay, let's just make it right. This person operated from honesty and integrity. It was represented to him as four units. Tax card says four units. There's no reason for that person to believe, this property owner, to believe that it would have been a three-family and not a four-family. So to ask this property owner to now accept a three-family instead of four-family, to me, is extreme and very unreasonable. And I think that we, as the city of Portsmouth, need to make him whole and move this forward.
Just, I will just make a brief comment before I call for the vote. With respect to the lot area, the request is basically a twenty percent reduction. The standard is three thousand square feet per dwelling unit, and the request is for twenty-four hundred. So that's a very substantial variance of twenty percent. And I share the concerns regarding the hardship. We are obligated in following, in applying the law, to find hardship inherent in the land, not in the building, and certainly not in the personal circumstances of the current owner. So, and we don't find that. That hasn't even been claimed. So I think, for those reasons, I cannot support the motion to approve the variances. I will call for a...
I have one more comment.
Roll, yes, briefly, please.
The definition of real estate is the land and everything attached to it. And when we look at these, we need to consider the whole parcel itself, when we look at whether or not something is reasonable or not. That includes the building that sits on the land. So it's not just the configuration of the land itself. It's the building on the land, and that's what we're considering here.
This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Eaton?
No.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Grasso?
No.
Mr. Lemay?
No.
And the acting chair votes no. So, do we need to deal with the special exception? I would, in my judgment, I would say no.
No.
Because it would be moot, a moot point at this time.
Well, the applicant has put in an application for this.
That's right.
So we have to consider it.
We have heard the, I don't mind having, taking a vote on that. We've heard all the testimony. I'll invite Mr. Marshall, and he's leaving. Okay. Does someone want to make a motion? Mr. Marshall, do you wish to address, I know it's a moot point at this point, but do you wish to address the criteria for the special exception? Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Will someone make a motion with respect to the, just to clear the record and make it complete? Will someone make a motion with respect to the special exception, please?
Make a motion to deny the special exception as requested and advertised.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, all right. Any discussion on that motion?
I'd like to suggest that we deny without prejudice.
Absolutely. Yes.
Agreed.
Agreed? All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yay.
One opposed? Okay. All right. Motion carries. Okay. Does anyone wish a break? Yes? No?
We're rolling, I'll let's go.
We're on a roll. All right.
Good door, all right.
Okay.
Derek.
Moving on promptly to case six-five. Nice timing.
Look at that. One, two, three.
All right. Phew. Go back.
Good morning. Foolish allergies. Not my best night. Have to, thank you, have to talk a lot.
Thank Mr. Parrott for covering for me for a little bit there. Apologize for being late.
You're very welcome.
I asked my children not to have their birthdays on the third Tuesday of the month, but it doesn't always work out that way, so. I was having cake.
Didn't bring any?
Yeah, where is it?
That's a good point.
We finished it.
Oh.
Great. Moving on, case six-five, the petition of Barbara Jenny and Matthew Beebe, owners, Timothy and Christina Virgin, applicants. The property located at fifty-four McNabb Court, Assessor Plan One Twelve, Lot Fifty-eight. They're looking to replace an existing land and stairs with a six-foot-by-nineteen-foot front porch and stairs, and construct a six-foot-by- porch and stairs and construct a six-foot by 20-foot rear addition. This will require a variance from Section 10.321 to allow the expansion of a nonconforming structure, variance from Section 10.521 to allow a building coverage of 37.9%, where 25% is the maximum allowed, variance from Section 10.521 to allow a zero-foot plus-or-minus front yard setback where 10 feet is required, and a variance from Section 10.521 to allow a five-foot plus-or-minus left-side yard setback where 20 feet is required. Is there anyone here to speak to this petition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Bernie Peelich, attorney from Portsmouth. I'm here on behalf of Timothy and Christina Virgin, the applicants. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to view the property at 54 McNabb Court. I have submitted photographs, numerous photographs of that portion of McNabb Court, which contains the four houses, which are identical. Those lots were created back in the, right around the turn of the century. A gentleman by the name of Mr. McNabb owned a larger piece of property and created those four lots, and I think the street was then named after him. It's a unique street also because it's really an L-shaped street. It's all McNabb Court, and there were two dead ends right there. This lot is located at the end of the L, and it's a very, very small lot. It's the smallest lot of all of the four, and it's actually the second smallest on the entire tax map. 2,775 square feet, which is the size of a good-sized home nowadays. The houses that were built by, I believe, Mr. McNabb have all had identical 20-foot by 26-foot footprints, 520 square feet. If you look at the photographs I've submitted, the house to the right, the Sully property, received variances in 2005 for the front porch and the rear addition. At some point, there was a front porch across the street, and I believe all four houses have the rear addition on them. What Mr. and Mrs. Virgin are doing is seeking a variance to add the front porch and to add a rear addition of six by 20. The present owners, Barbara Jenny and Matthew Beebe, were here in 2006 and received a variance to place an addition on this structure and to act, a bigger addition, and actually to put a second floor on the garage and to connect the garage to the rear of the building. We're here for two things. The existing home is five feet from the left-side property line. The rear addition will also be five feet from the left-side property line, as will the front porch. That left side is a huge open space, which consists of the two backyards of two houses that front on South Street, two very long, narrow lots, and then Langdon Park. So if you look, if you go to the dead-end street of McNabb and look forward, you'll see nothing but open space, which are these two backyards and Langdon Park. The front, if you look, one of the reasons I included this property survey done for Mr. and Mrs., Mr. Beebe, and for, you'll see that the property line is about 11, 10 or 11 feet off of the edge of pavement. Both this house and the Sully house next door have big green areas that they maintain that are actually part of McNabb Court. There's about 300 square feet of green space in front of 54 McNabb that couldn't, can be used and is used and maintained by the owners of the property, as is the property next door. The boundary survey that I submitted does not show the front porch of the Sully house. It was obviously done before the front porch was placed on the Sully house, but what the applicants are proposing is the same style architecture for the front porch as exists on the other front porches on the street. The rear addition is shown in the elevations, and I think if you look at the existing lot coverage, which is 31% now, I know 37.9 seems like a lot of lot coverage, but because this is the smallest lot, it already has 31% lot coverage. What we're asking for, I think, is reasonable. We have the mitigating factor of the 300 square feet of green space out front, which is, everybody uses for part of their front lawn, which actually, I think, lessens the impact of 37% lot coverage, as does the big open space which is beside this property. Turning to the five criteria necessary for the board to grant these variances, we have to first demonstrate that this lot has unique circumstances, special conditions which prevent the proper enjoyment by the owners of their property. As I indicated, this is one of the smallest lots in the neighborhood. It's the end of a dead-end street. It has this 10-foot by 30-foot area of green space in front of it. I think the combination of those factors result in special conditions which are unique and distinguish this property from others in the area. The proposed use is a reasonable use. Adjacent properties have been granted relief to do the same thing that's being proposed by the applicants, and as a result, I think because of the special conditions, there is no fear and substantial relationship between the general purposes of the ordinance and specific application of the ordinance to the property. All of the lots which were created, Elwin Avenue, the Elwin subdivision was created in the early 1900s. This area was subdivided in the early 1900s. Many of the houses were on 50-by-100 lots, a lot of them were on 50-by-80 lots. This one happened to be on even a smaller lot, 50 by roughly, not even 60. The zoning creates problems in that entire neighborhood, and as I was looking through the agenda, there are a lot of requests tonight and next week for properties along that Lincoln Avenue corridor, simply because garages are too close to property lines, to set side-yard setbacks, houses are too close to fronts, too close to sides. Because all of that development predates our zoning and the application of the current zoning ordinance to it, we end up in situations where all of the lots aren't neatly arranged and not all of the buildings sit neatly in the center of each and every lot. I think granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. We've gotten the new test for that and the spirit and intent of the ordinance in 2005 and 2007, in the Malachi-Glen case and the Chester-Rotten-Gun Club case, where the Supreme Court said it's not contrary to the public interest and it's not contrary to the spirit and the intent of the ordinance if it does not result in a substantial change in the characteristics of the neighborhood, or if it does not result in a threat to public safety, health, or welfare. If you look at this, what the applicants are asking for is what their neighbors already have. It's not going to change this character, the essential characteristics of this residential neighborhood. It's in keeping with it. That same identical house, there must be 10 of them there in that whole neighborhood. They all look the same, and they've all been added on to. Some of them have front porches, almost all of them have rear additions, some are one-story rear additions, some are two-story rear additions, some are one-and-a-half story. It certainly is not going to change the characteristics of the neighborhood, and it's not in any way going to threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. And that's the same test for the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We believe that granting the requested variances will result in substantial justice being done. I can't think of any benefit to the general public in denying this request for variances. The hardship upon the applicants would be considerable. As you may be able to see, or if Ms. Virgin were up here, they are expecting a new baby. They're planning to move into the house. I can only think of the argument that was presented by Mrs. Sully when she was here in 2005 for the property next door, when she got the variance, and she said, "The house is so small, there's not room enough for two people to be in the kitchen at the same time. There is not room for us to have any place to eat in the kitchen, yet we don't really have a formal dining room." And this house has the same footprint, the same layout. The board granted her variances for the porch and the back addition. I think that to be consistent, the board should probably grant this application. There is a substantial hardship upon the applicants if the variances are not granted. Part of the neighborhood mantra that the applicants have heard is that, "Well, we're glad, we have no objection to you putting an addition. We want a family that's going to stay here in the neighborhood," and part of the reason why people haven't been able to stay in the neighborhood is because the house is too small. So I think that substantial justice will be done. The last criteria, granting the requested variance, will not result in surrounding property values being diminished. As you can see, from looking at the Sully house, the blue house with the white porch next door, and hopefully the Virgins, if they get this application, are planning to put on a very similar porch. They're planning to refresh the outside of the house, as you can see from the elevations. It certainly is not going to diminish surrounding property values, but will enhance them. So we believe that the five criteria necessary for the board to grant this is met by this application. We would hope you would agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I have one question.
Mr. Durbin?
Attorney Peelich, you stated that it was a 31% lot coverage is-
There is now, currently, yes.
Okay, so I assume it's just an error. Then on page two of your memo, it says 32 exists. Says on page one, because of the small lot size, the existing lot coverage is nonconforming at 31.
Right.
And on page-
Front yard setback is nonconforming now. The left-side setback is nonconforming. The right-side setback is nonconforming, and the lot coverage is nonconforming as it exists.
Yeah, I was just asking for a clarification. If it was an error on page two, wouldn't you say-
On two?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yep, 32% exists.
Oh.
I assume, yes, but.
Oh, 32 exists. It's 31-point-something.
Okay.
Either 31 or 32, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any further questions? Mr. Lemay?
It appears there was no action taken on the 2005 variance. Is that true? I read-
Oh, yeah, no. Mr. Beebe never constructed it. That's correct.
We took action, but nothing.
It was extended for one year, but nothing happened.
So was the garage, just in terms of looking ahead here?
No, the garage is not connected to the home, and it's still there in its existing condition. And it's one story.
It's in reasonable repair. We're not going to be back in a month saying we want to remove all the garage.
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
No. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Can you hear my heart beating? I'm going to read, if I can, from my letter. I had emailed one. I didn't think I could be here tonight. But I'm Julia Tebow, and I own the property to the east, the dead-end large lot that you mentioned. So if you don't mind if I read from my letter. So I own the 405 South Street property to the east, the left side, which fronts on South Street and runs over 300 feet deep, as in a butter on two properties on McNabb Court, and I'd like to share my concerns. McNabb Court area is a lovely, quiet cul-de-sac, which directly dead-ends into the rear part of my property at 405. There's access to my property by a double gate and a chain-link fence, which my father put up many, many years ago, at the termination of McNabb Court, and directly next to the gate, next to 54 McNabb Court, is a fire hydrant. I'm concerned for all the homes in that area, that the proposed front porch stairs and zero feet of front yard setback will cause this hydrant to be blocked, which would be catastrophic should a fire occur in any of these homes, in my field, in my home, or my garage. Occupants of this house have been parking in front of the hydrant for some time, and the home was recently marketed and sold, my understanding is they closed at the beginning of this month, in error that there was parking in the street in front of this hydrant as an available parking space for the home. In winter, there's also the issue of snow removal, of where to put the snow. At many times in the past, the city has brought a front-end loader and just dumped it onto my property over the fence, damaging the fence. It's something that we, my father repeatedly requested not be done. I'm also concerned that the lack of front yard setback for this property will set a precedent and encourage others to build to the street as well, therefore making a narrow street even tighter. I have no concern about the rear addition. I think the house was purchased knowing what it was. It's a house on a small lot, but on a dead-end street at this point in time, and I feel my access to my back property is limited. It's already limited by the two vehicles from both houses that are parking in front of that hydrant on a street when they shouldn't be doing so. So that's what I have to say, so that I feel that it would be an issue of a threat to the safety of the homes and the people in the area.
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak to, for, or against? Seeing no one rise, I close the public hearing. We have a request for a front porch and a rear addition, requiring a few variances. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, let me, if you, would I do, I would do two of the three, do them in segments? Or if you don't want, that's fine.
We can split those up, if you would like.
I would move approval of the first variance, which is namely to allow expansion of a nonconforming structure, and variance of the left-side setback. Left-side setback, which is the second variance.
Okay.
Third, well, actually, the fourth variance.
I think you're-
Or is that too complicated?
Well, no, I think what you're going towards is you're in favor of the rear addition, and you're not supporting the front porch, but I think if that is the path that you're on, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, we would need to still grant some lot coverage-
Right.
-relief to make that happen, so I don't-
No, that's not, that's not where I'm going.
Okay.
No. But if that will be defective, because I can't figure out what the partial lot coverage might be, I'll withdraw the motion. I can't figure out what that, just off the top of my head, what that addition would be for that one variance.
Well, it would be 34.
34?
Because they're the exact same size.
All right.
Split the difference.
Okay, all right. All right, fair enough. Okay, in that case, I move approval of the first variance and the half of the second variance, which- variance, which is the lot coverage increase, and the fourth variance, which is the five-foot left side setback where 20 feet is required.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
To clarify that we're granting 34% of the variance in part two.
Well, I think 34%, and it might be a decimal point off, but I think the intent is the rear addition.
That's why I was hesitant to...
We're pretty...
That's close.
Yeah.
Okay.
34% plus or minus, we can have in the motion.
All right, that's fine.
All right, your motion, please.
Okay, that's fine. These are simply dimensional variances being requested. Granting the variances would not be contrary to the public interest. The subject of this variance is on the back of the property, and it would, as has been pointed out, be no closer to the sideline that is presently. It's only six feet on depth of the building, and equal to the width of the building. And it's quite a modest addition to the back of it, will make the house obviously more usable, so I don't think that, I think it would be hard to argue that there was any public interest to be injured in this case. Excuse me. Secondly, granting the variances would observe the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance, obviously, is to encourage people to upgrade their houses, to make them more useful if they can, so long as they don't infringe upon their neighbors. And I think this case, that would be the case with respect to this back addition. Thirdly, granting the variance would do substantial justice. This is the tipping thing, which is more important to the, is there overwhelming or overriding public interest that would argue against it? And I would argue, in this case, there is not, so the question should be decided in favor of the applicant. Fourthly, granting the variances would not diminish the value of surrounding properties. As has been pointed out, these houses are astonishingly alike, they're apparently built at the same time or close to, and to the same plans. Excuse me. And the effect, if any, would, I would say, would be minimal, and if in any case, maybe even positive, but certainly not a negative, because they would, they're also similar. And the unnecessary hardship test, in this case, I guess, is clear, in that the lot, the lot is very narrow, it's only 40 feet across the front, and the house is situated reasonably on the lot, just about the only place you could put it, and have a driveway and a garage. So, the lot itself is a severely limiting factor. The house exists, it's where it is. The hardship, I think, test is met, so, for those reasons, I support, I make the motion.
Thank you. Your second, please.
I think that lot coverage is an issue for me. There is about 32% existing now, but this is a really unusual piece of property here with the four small lots and a little grouping here, so I think it's supported to put a small addition on the back and raise that to 34%. I think more would probably be inappropriate, considering the dense area that this is built in. So, for those reasons, I would, I will approve or support one plus a 34%, or whatever it takes to make the rear addition, and the side yard variance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say this before I ask for more comments. So, we have a motion for the rear addition. After this, we vote on this motion, I will ask for a motion on the front porch, either way, yea or nay. But if there's anyone here who's in support of the rear addition and the front porch, I think there'll still be an opportunity to make a motion in favor of the front, zero-foot front setback variance request, and I feel it's still on the table to grant the original request. So, if you're in support of both, I feel you can support this motion, and then we'll be asking, I'll be asking for a second motion for the front setback. And if no one's in favor, then we'll just have a quick motion, nay, against, and if there's support, we can open that up. So, what I'll ask for now, if there are any further comments from the board in regards to the motion we have on the table right now. Here are none, so the motion is to grant the expansion of nonconforming use, grant a building coverage of 34%, plus or minus, essentially what it takes to allow the rear addition being proposed, and a support in the five-foot, plus or minus, left side yard setback where 20 is required. Mr. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Juice?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Grasso?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, the first motion passes. I will ask for a motion on the variance request we have not addressed yet, and that is for
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for discussion.
Your motion, please.
Do we need a second?
Or do you want to take a...
Well, motion to approve for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. Your motion, please.
I think the hardship has been established in the previous variance, it applies to this variance also. The big distinction with this one is the fact that we are going to zero feet on a front sideline, and yet, that's been done routinely in this neighborhood, from the looks of it. And this is a little bit unique, in that this is a little, this little court is grassed in, there's, it is a public way, but it's, you know, I went up there this afternoon, and you can't get within 50 feet of it for the kids playing out there and everything, and it's very private. And I'm sensitive to the argument regarding the fire hydrant, however, I think that if this construction is going to impact that, that can probably be handled by the building department, and it's not something I think we've got to worry about. So, I think the other rationale, it's already been given on the previous variance, apply with that additional information on the front line.
Thank you. Your second, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, this motion's going to involve all four variances, the second one bringing up to 37.9.
Yes. And the front one, zero.
And the front one, zero. Yeah, I support the motion for this. I was there this weekend. It's a very secluded area, it's a dead-end street, there's like a little, I think it's McNabb, I don't know, there's a road and a court, but one of them goes, and there's like a little wooded area, and a little incline. I don't feel that this is a real invasion on anyone. As Mr. Lemay's pointed out, the other houses have similar additions, and I really don't see any problem with approving this front porch.
Any further comments from the board? I'll just add that I also support the motion to grant, I remember this neighborhood, before it had any front porches, and it was a bunch of front, you know, flat, block-based houses with no character and real sense of neighborhood to it, and now, there's two front porches there now, and it's just added a lot of character and life to that neighborhood. I respect the 10-foot requirement, but this is still more than 10 feet away from the edge of pavement, you know, up until the pavement's all lawn that these people maintain, so I feel that buffer's still there. There's no sidewalks, there's no traffic. If you live in one of those houses, or you don't go down there. So, I don't feel that we're setting any kind of precedence by allowing zero foot here. I think this is a very unique situation. I don't feel it in any way changes the essential character. I think it tries to keep up with the character that's been established there. In regards to the parking, I don't feel the applicant should be paying the price for past owners there. And in regards to the hydrant, this has gone before the planning staff. If there were issues with the hydrant, I think they would be before us, some kind of memo from the city. I mean, I'm aware of what it takes to have a fire hydrant in a parking space, and this is far more space than that is. So, I don't really see any safety issues there, and if there were, the city would not let this go through. So, again, I feel the lot coverage does feel like a big number, but I think, considering the neighborhood and the huge open space off to the side of it, I feel it's acceptable, and I'm sure when you do a six-foot addition off the back and a porch on the front, you've pretty much finished what you can do to the house. I don't foresee anything else happening here, because you're pretty much locked yourself in, so. And I will be supporting the motion. If there's no further comment, I'll call for a vote, and it is to approve the zero-foot front setback and the original request on building coverage, and the porch would also require the five-foot left side yard setback. Mr. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Juice?
No.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Grasso?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Your petition has been approved. Mr. Chairman, I have to step down. Ms. Russo will be sitting...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sitting out this one.
Ms. Russo will be voting twice on this now?
Good.
You only get one vote, but you get to vote twice.
Good.
Let's move on to case...
I like when I get two votes.
Six-sixth, petition of Catherine Moretti, a property located at 261 Myrtle Avenue, Assessor Plan 220, Lot 87, in the zoning district Single Residence B. They're looking to subdivide an existing conformant lot into five lots, four of which would be nonconformant for continuous street frontage. This will require a variance from Section 10.321 to allow four lots with a continuous street frontage of 80 feet, plus or minus where 100 feet is required. Is there anyone here to speak to this petition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good news. I think we just made your job, hopefully, a lot easier. The plan I just passed out is different than the one in your packet. We now only have one lot that has 80 feet of frontage. We have been able to reconfigure lot lines, so that four of the five lots have 100 feet of frontage, and only one has 80 feet. So, we only need a variance for one lot with 80 feet of frontage, rather than having four lots. If you look at the one in your packet and the one that you have, the one in your packet showed the existing home having 120-plus, 70 or 50 feet of frontage, had about 170 feet of frontage. What we did was, we cut that frontage back and used it to add to the other four lots, so that we now have 100, 100, 180. This is an interesting piece of property. It's a well-kept secret. If you had an opportunity to go up there, hopefully you found it. It lies between what's left of Myrtle Avenue and Central Avenue and I-95. Originally, the Moretti property extended all the way over to what is Edmund Avenue now. When I-95, the High Level Bridge, was built, there was a large taking of the Moretti property, which results in a kind of a unique-shaped lot, where there's considerable frontage on Central Avenue, a little bit on Myrtle, but then there's the big existing utility easement along the back. The lot size for this zone is 15,000, minimum lot size. As you can see, we're well above that. Our lots are 21, 21, 25, 22, and 21. So, that even though the minimum lot size is 15,000, and actually, Altus Engineering came up with plans for six and seven lots, if we wanted to build a city street with a cul-de-sac, we could have gotten probably seven lots in there. But rather than do that, and make the lot small, we went with five lots, with each lot having frontage on the existing public streets, not building any more public streets and cul-de-sacs that the city has to take care of. It's a very wooded area, if you drove out there, it's high and dry, no wetlands. We meet all of the requirements, except the 80 feet on the last lot, Lot Number Five, which happens to be the lot that abuts the business district. This is one of those times when a Single Residence B district directly abuts a business We believe that 80 feet is certainly sufficient to provide access to that lot, Lot Number Five. As you can see, it's 21,338 square feet, which is 6,000 square feet larger than what's required. It's just about a half an acre. There is more than enough of a buildable envelope for a normal-sized home to go in there. The last case, we were talking about a lot that was 2,700 square feet, and this one is 21,000 square feet, so. We think that the granting the variance is reasonable. If you look at the shape and configuration of the lot, number one, it's a large, large lot in the residential district, which is unique in and of itself. It has a unique shape, given the fact that the back half of it was taken by the federal government when the High Level Bridge was built. It has the utility easement that runs across the back, the 200-foot, I think, or it's 100-foot utility easement, PSNH, for the power lines that go there. I think these combined factors are special conditions, which make this property unique. As you can see, we have more than enough land area for the lots we're creating. We have probably 30,000 extra square feet above and beyond what we would need for five, 15,000 square foot lots. So, I think that there is a hardship. I think that granting the variance won't be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, nor will be contrary to the public interest. We know that there is, there are very, very, very few building lots available in the city of Portsmouth any longer. Very few building lots that are unencumbered by wetlands or other geographical features that make them difficult to build upon. These lots don't have very many constraints. We believe that allowing a subdivision of this size in this neighborhood is certainly not going to affect the essential characteristics of the neighborhood, and it's not going to threaten public health, safety, or welfare. So, we think that the public interest is not being harmed, and we feel that certainly this is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. I think substantial justice will be done also. We had about six alternatives that were prepared by Eric Weinrib and Eric Sarri at Altus, and in fact, this lot qualified for low income, and there was a plan that met the ordinance that had 21 affordable housing units on it. This is a much better way to go. Single-family residences are more in keeping with the neighborhood. Everybody having their own driveway off of Central Avenue is consistent. It's more appropriate than going in there and wiping out a bunch of trees and putting a big circular cul-de-sac with small lots off of it. So, I think that substantial justice would be done if the variance was granted, and certainly granting the variance is not going to result in any diminution in value of surrounding properties. That lot in question, the 80-foot of frontage, is surrounded on two sides by a business district with I-95 in its backyard, so. I think that the board can find that all five criteria are met to grant this one variance, rather than the four we asked for previously. Mr. and Mrs. Moretti's two boys are here, if you have any questions about the history of the property. I'll be happy to try to answer them. If you have any other questions, we'll go from there. Mr. Juice?
That's my job. That's why I looked at him.
Mr. Juice? That's my school teaching background. When you raise your hand, I called on you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to steal your question. I think Arthur was looking at the same thing. I'd like to know who the magician is on this particular set of plans, between sheet number six, which I calculate to have on the property itself right now, as it stands, 441-plus of my... 441-plus or minus feet of frontage. And if you take the plan that you just gave us, which is Sheet Number Seven, you come out with 480 feet of frontage. Where did the extra 39 feet come from?
I'm not sure.
The little section on Central Ave is not included in that calculation. If you go down, you see 80. Start from the top of the page and come down. You have 80, 80, 80, 80.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And then there's a little section to the lot with the existing.
Well, it says 121.
I know, but it doesn't, there's no number that wraps around the corner. That's
If you look at the tax map.
That's probably another 40 feet.
If you look at the tax map, and I think I gave you a copy of that, there's actually a total of 499 feet of frontage, if the tax map is correct. We have shown 80 and then put parentheses remainder because this plan is not drawn pursuant to a survey, but it's drawn pursuant to the tax map. And the tax map shows a total of 4, I think, 499 of total frontage, if you add it up. Tax map I have, 376, and I think it was 123.
Does that help, Mr. Juice?
That would certainly help because if that tax map is accurate, this lot's actually going to have like 97 feet of frontage rather than 80. But Altus said because it has not been surveyed, they want to leave it at 80 just in case the survey turns up different than the tax map.
Are there any further questions in the board? Mr. Parrott?
So, I guess, seeing, I did have the same concern Mr. Juice had because I couldn't add them up either. And Note Three on the map, it says, "No survey of any kind was performed. All lines and related calculations should be regarded as being approximate." So, I guess the obvious question is, how approximate is approximate? I mean, that opens the door to anything.
Well, yeah, it's a conceptual, it's a conceptual plan, and it's taken from the tax map. And I had a meeting at the Planning Department, and obviously, they realize that a full surveyed plan is needed when you go to the Planning Board. But as far as the conceptual plan and coming up with a need for frontage variances, they felt that this was okay to go forward with a plan like this.
There's an engineer in the Planning Department now?
What's that?
Is there an engineer in the Planning Department now?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, all right.
I met with Mr. Tinker.
I mean, approximate, I mean, with a, with a big note like that, it's like opening up the bond door. You can see, you know what I'm talking about. On Note Three, property, this property easement in existing condition, its information shown on its plan is obtained from city maps. No survey of any kind, any kind was performed. All lines and related calculations should be regarded as being approximate. So, you know, when, when technical people talk about approximate, they're talking plus or minus, you know, maybe some percentage as being reasonable. But this just opens the door up as, no matter what it comes out, eventually, they can say, "Well, the note covered this. Didn't you read the note? It said approximate." So, I guess I'm a little concerned that that is as squishy as it is.
There is, and I don't know if I included in your package, did I include the I-95 taking plan?
You'll have to hand it out and go back to the mic so I can hear it. Thank you.
Excuse me?
This is a survey that was done by New Hampshire DOT or somebody contracted by them at the time they took the Moretti's property in 1969. This is when the High Level Bridge was being constructed, and this was part of the approach, obviously, to the High Level Bridge. And you can see that it is a meets and bounds survey, and it actually goes to the hundredth of an acre or, and tells what the size of Patsy and Catherine Moretti's property was, what was taken, and what remains. And I think that that's a pretty accurate survey, and I assume that Altus must have looked at it. I don't know. In any event, if what we are proposing this evening somehow changes, we'd obviously have to come back. But certainly, we know we can create four lots with 100 feet of frontage and one with 80 feet of frontage.
And that's my only comment to the board. If they do feel they want to move forward, they're upfront that this isn't surveyed. They feel their proposal is that they have a definite four lots at 100 feet, one of at least 80. They think it could be up into the high 90s if it goes according to the tax map.
Yeah.
Anything less than 80, they would be back before us. So.
You mean stipulate that?
I will agree that it's better than the first one. I'm sorry.
Plus or minus doesn't mean more than 80.
Not, no.
Well, they're getting a variance to have less than. They can, they can have 90 without. If they have relief for 80, they can have whatever.
So, you would specify relief for 80 is what I'm asking.
That's what the variance request is for, and that's what I believe a motion would have to be based on 80.
I have another question for you, too. The, it was advertised for four lots with continuous street frontage of 80 where 100 is required, so we wouldn't be granting what was advertised.
We can always grant less than what was advertised, which is what we're doing.
So, we're going to go for one lot?
One lot at 80 feet.
See that when you're done?
Yep. Do we have any further questions from the board?
Oh.
We'll get that back down when we get a chance. That plane, yeah. Oh, Mary, do you have that? Sorry. No further questions from the board?
Yeah, I just make a comment, Mr. Chairman. I don't see any disadvantage in having a surveyed map in front of us at this point in time. You know, it's clearly a proposal that has a lot of attractive features to it. And if, and if a surveyed plan is going to have to be presented to the Planning Board, why, why shouldn't we have as good information at this point in time? That's my only comment.
Well, we can't go to the Planning Board unless we get a variance. We have to get a variance first, and the cost of a full survey of those five lots would be substantial to Mrs. Moretti, who is.
I would respectfully disagree. I've seen, I've seen the opposite. I've seen things go to the Planning Board, and with the stipulation that it might have to get a variance, so.
Excuse me. In terms of having full information, could I see the map?
Oh, yes. It would be the most challenging map you've seen since you've been on the board.
You can get something out of that. You're better than I am.
Any further questions from Mr. Peillage?
Yeah.
Ms. Russo?
Why can't you do the 100? What's the issue? Where's your hardship?
We don't, we don't have a full, at least, we don't have the full 600 feet of frontage to, 500 feet of frontage to make five feet of, five lots each with 100. If the tax map is correct, we have 499 feet of frontage. So, it may be that this last lot will have 99 feet of frontage rather than the 80 we're applying for. We know that it's going to be 80 or much, or considerably larger.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public to speak in favor of the application? Anyone to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak to, for, or against? Yes?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity to, to come as one of the neighbors, one of the abutters, to oppose this request for a variance. We do live in a very unique area.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Oh, thank you. Sorry. My name is Lynn Rutter, and I live at 240 Myrtle Ave in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. So, I live directly across from Kathy Moretti. And I come before you in opposition. I agree that we live in a very unique area, as Portsmouth is. But I speak, I think, for other neighbors that we love our little neighborhood. It's a very family-oriented neighborhood. It's a dead-end street. We abut a school, and we've all fixed, we all put a lot of care into our properties and have all invested a lot into our homes based on the current neighborhood and how it exists. The uniqueness of the area is that I think we've each created our own little habitats in our yard. But the negative aspects of this area are true. We can hear Route 95, and we can see 95. We can hear and see Route One. We have power lines that go right over Central Ave, and we look at a bus parking lot. As is the way our homes exist and that property of hers, it creates a buffer. It creates a buffer for, to provide our own little small habitat that still exists. It's also crucial to our sound. Each of us hear 95 significantly in our homes. I think this proposed development, and particularly, I guess what we're here in front to discuss is the fifth home, will significantly impact, it's going to significantly impact the value of our properties and the quality of our life. I'm very surprised that there's no survey. There's been nothing for us to see. There's been no discussion in the neighborhood. We've been given no papers. None of us really have any information except for visualizing what this could do. The three main points that I think in particular is the sound, as I've discussed. The water issue, already, the town of Portsmouth has come to my home multiple times because the road flows down at an angle, my driveway flows down, and it creates a wet plain. It also has flowed down my driveway and into my garage, and the town has assisted with that on a few occasions. I'm particularly concerned about any resale of my property, and my knowledge with real estate is that I imagine it could affect it by $100,000 and to not, and I don't think I'm exaggerating that. But I guess Portsmouth is a very rare and beautiful place. I would say just consider keeping it that way. If you open up and clear all this land, it's going to be a very undesirable area. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Do we have any questions from the board? I have one question. What would be the effect on the value of your house if three house lots went in there?
Right.
And those trees were all cut anyway?
Right. I did list my home for sale last spring, and we started, I'm remembering, at like 460, I believe. The comments that I got mostly were the sound. Sound is an issue. That property is between me and 95 and provides a great barrier.
My question is, what's the difference between
Yeah.
three houses developed on that whole lot or four houses on that whole lot? Do you have a $100,000 price decline of the four lots?
Okay, yeah.
What's your decline because of, if there were three lots?
Right. I guess I'm responding to, yes, any development, you know, I, but also, we're talking five, which would take out, I would think, all the trees. Did this just go off? All the trees and would also expose the power lines. So, I do think it would be about $100,000 loss.
If there were one less lot, it would still be 100,000? Okay. So, they can do that without a variance is 100,000 loss, and with the variance is 100,000 loss. I'm just trying to get your.
Maybe I'm not following because I'm a little nervous.
But you're telling us that you suspect $100,000 loss in the value of your house if this lot is developed, if this lot is developed into
The fifth lot, you're saying?
Five single-filmy homes.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm saying, instead of five homes reducing your value by 100,000, what would four homes reduce your house by?
Well, if there were some buffer, it may not decrease it by quite that much.
Okay.
But, you know, 50, 75, it is going to affect it.
Because I'm assuming that if it's one less lot, the lots get bigger, you know, this, probably the same amount of tree cut in either way, maybe a little less, huh?
Right.
I'm just, I know the 100,000 number you shared. I'm just trying to relate that to what
Per home.
Their property rights are now, their property rights are to do for lots. So, I'm just trying to see what the difference is.
Well, I have seen no survey. I have no idea how they're mapping it out. We've had no conversations. But I'm assuming the more homes you build, the more cars you have, the more trees come down, the more exposure you have.
Okay. All right. So, you, you've answered my question.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Anyone else to speak to, for, or against? Why don't you go next, and I'll let this woman come up. Her hand went up first. You can come up. Yeah, you were, you beat him to the punch.
Good evening. I have a very sore throat, so I'm sorry if I'm a little hoarse. I'm Diane Kozakowski, and I live at 287 Myrtle Avenue. I own the neighboring property to Mrs. Moretti's land. I'm going to speak only in the fact that I love my neighborhood. I have, and I'm going to state that I'm not in opposition to the development of the land. I was just concerned about how many properties were being placed on this land. This property is sandwiched, as you can see on the maps, it's sandwiched between a business on Maplewood Avenue, 95, and a large bus lot. There's a large power line down the middle, and most of the frontage on Central Avenue is a very, very large amount of ledge. To access this many home sites would require a removal of most of the trees that are there and a probable demolition of an enormous amount of ledge. I'm just not sure how desirable all these lots would be once all of the trees are taken down and 95 is exposed. The noise would be significant. I can tell you all, I live closest to 95 on that street. It's in my backyard. It's loud. If you take down any trees to that side, I can't even imagine what the sound would increase. I believe that that would only drive all of the properties, our property values down, and I believe it would create a less desirable neighborhood for anybody wishing to come and build or move there. So, I love my neighborhood. I'm not opposed to a development if they, if it was two. I know that they're allowed to do four or five now. I'm in, I'm just in opposition to the variance requested, and thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to, for, or against?
I guess, I hope we don't confuse whether or not the subdivision should be granted with regard to the request for a variance. The property is going to be developed. She obviously has a right to develop her property inconsistent with the zoning ordinance. What I'm going to show you are Concepts Two, Three, Four, and Five that we are not proposing. Concept Two is five lots with a cul-de-sac, no variance is required. Concept Number Three is six lots with a cul-de-sac, no variance is required. Concept Number Four is 12 units of affordable housing, residential density incentive planned unit development, which no variances would be required. And Concept Number Five is also 12 townhouse units with parking garages underneath, which would also be allowed under the residential density incentive planned unit development. What we're proposing is leave the existing house and put four more. What we could do without variances is five single-family residences, six single-family residences, or 12 duplexes.
Any further questions from Mr. Peillage? Seen none. Last call. Anyone speak to, for, or against? I guess they're still coming. All right. Come on up.
My name is Joe Murdy. I'm speaking behalf of my mother at Myrtle Ave. The listings on the property, the sign from the realtor across the street, you go on the website, it showed these concepts for the last six months. And before these concepts were done, we had gone to the town on several occasions in the last couple of years. We talked about the flexing housing, the housing development that came through January of last year. We talked We talked about affordable housing. Eric has been in contact with the town at many, many occasions. And at one point, we had talked to some of the neighbors about the impact on the property. As far as the impacts concerned, the two houses across the street are actually, one is touching the highway and the other one is to the left-hand side of, if you're facing their house, the highway's to the right. My mother's house is across the street and the property is directly behind her. Okay? So as far as the sound of the highway, the sound is already there. If you look at the properties from the other two, the butters, the sound from the highway is actually to the far end of Myrtle Ave. There actually is a buffer up on the highway and it stops right at New Franklin School by the tennis courts. Okay? So there's a sound buffer up there. But there's a direct shot from the highway right to both of those houses in their backyard. So my mother's property goes back 85 feet down the highway and then it goes across 370 feet down the power lines in the back. So that whole left-hand, right-hand side of the property doesn't even affect that at all, for one. For two, all the prop, all the pine trees on that property are dead from all the salt from the highway. Every one of the large pine trees is coming down. They're not survivable. You can, if you've walked the property, you saw every one of them, all the bark is gone. They're all dead on that property. That's all due from, we're assuming, we were told it was all from the salt from the highway. Okay? So as far as the buffer for that, that would be gone. So the question at this point is the multi-lots. And at one point, we actually talked about putting cul-de-sac in and I talked to, and I'm going back several years to David Holden. And we talked at one point about putting four multi-use, multi-lots in there and working on zoning changes and things. But at the end of the day, we looked at the property and said, how that would at least impact that whole area? I grew up there. That's where I grew up, in that house. I love the school. I love the neighborhood. Whoever buys my mother's house is going to fix it up. It's a beautiful Victorian house. It needs some work, granted. My mother is moving on, all right? The back lots will give the option to do that. And then in the city of Portsmouth, the contract is not going to come in and build a $200,000 house. He's going to build something nice. If he's going to buy the property, he's going to do it up nice. The setbacks, the water, talked about the water down the street. The water runs down Central Ave past that. The property, as far as the ledge on the front, it's perfect. It pitches down towards Myrtle Ave. You don't need a pump-up system for the septic. You can run the septic right down to that side. There's electric on the street. Other than taking out the ledge on one side, we haven't even found out if we have, if we can dig it up with a jackhammer or if it's loose. We haven't even gone that far yet. On the second thing is Eric at Alta said, some people might not want to take down that rock wall. They might want to put the house on top of it and give them a buffer from the other street. Because they are looking at a bus station. They are looking at the industrial zone on the other side. And I'm going to go back several years. Several years ago, we had a business try to purchase, or tried to get a variance to put a commercial venture on the back behind the power lines. Okay? And I sat right here, probably five years ago, and stopped that. And Mr. Peillage was actually on the other side of the fence. I still like him though. But they were trying to squeeze in a commercial business there. So if something like this doesn't happen, what could move in there? I mean, the impact could easily be converted over to some kind of commercial zoning. And how would that impact the area? Somebody with some money might walk in there and just take that lot and a lot behind it and put them together. So at the end of the day, we sat down and said, I don't want to compromise a property. I don't want to go in there and put a road in there. I want some very simple houses. Portsmouth doesn't have any small ranches. My mother would love to put a small ranch here and move in there herself. So again, as far as, you know, what the engineering we've done and the plans we've done, we've been spending a lot of time on this. We've talked to a lot of people on this. And we feel this is the least impact for the town. And as far as the setbacks, all the setbacks are on those drawings. As far as the side lots, they're 20-foot side backs, 35 in the front. And especially on the main house, we've got 125 and 1/2 feet in the front, so we're asking for seven feet. I think it's seven and 1/2 feet, I think, total that we walked out. And that's it. I mean, I don't, I hope I addressed everything.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Come on up.
Hi. My name is David Lear. I own 260 Myrtle Ave. It's directly across the street from their property. I apologize, I'm a little bit ignorant to this process. I actually came down here just to, you know, kind of learn what was going on. I did see some of the plans online. Some of them actually do look really nice. That property could actually use some fixing up. I live directly across the street from it, across from her main driveway, across from their frontage on, or all of their frontage on Myrtle Ave. My concern with granting a variance to it is that that property is set up high. As, as he said, the water does run off into a wetlands. There's actually a city pipe under Myrtle Ave that goes in between mine and her property that drains into a wetlands, a city pipe that's been there. And that directly runs off from their property. And the concern is, you know, I'm sure he cares about the neighborhood. They're not developing it. They're selling the property for someone else to develop. They get to choose what happens on the property. I don't think that that is in our neighborhood's best interests. I know that they're allowed to do what they want with their property, as is, but as for granting a variance just for personal interest in terms of making a better sale of the property, I don't believe that's what you guys are here intended to do, correct? Am I wrong? So, so those are my only concerns. And to understand, you know, are we entitled to see any of these plans before any variances or anything's granted?
They're all available in City Hall.
Okay.
You get your butters' notice certified mail, so they're-
I got the notice, but I didn't see any plans or anything else.
Then you have to go to City Hall to-
Okay.
To see them.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Anyone else to speak to, for, or against? Give it a shot? It's not that hard.
My name is Sam Jones and my wife Diana Frye and I live at 217 Myrtle, which is right on the corner of Myrtle and Central. And a long stretch of our property is directly across the street from, from the property that's for sale. And I don't have any facts or figures to, to give you that would go against the development of this property. As far as that variance goes, I'm not, I'm opposed to the whole development of the, of the, of the land. I'm not, so I don't know if we have any say in that. We don't really have any say in whether it gets developed or not. I am objecting to the fact that it seems like we, we have not been notified as, as to the, whatever plans there might be for dividing it or whatever environmental impact there might be to the area. Again, as Diane and Lynn, my neighbors, have said, we don't, we don't have any say as to what they do and how many trees they cut down, but it would directly impact us environmentally and as far as the quality of life in that area. I think, you know, as far as the noise and the, and the property values, it would, cutting down the trees and clearing the land, and I've, I've worked in construction for many years and I've seen how, no matter how careful they are at landscaping and, and planting trees, that it's always a pretty drastic change. And I think the quality of life and the environmental impact to that area would, would be greatly affected. And again, that's not what, that's not the issue that's here tonight. The issue is that, that one variance for the, for the fifth property. I don't know if we have any other time to voice our emotional or our concerns over the future of this development. So that's why I'm here tonight to voice, voice those concerns.
This is the first step in many, if this project is to go through, it would go before the planning board, where maybe the butters get together and negotiate some kind of tree buffer or whatever wants to happen at that level. You know, we deal with what's before us.
Right.
You know, there were plans that we have that were at City Hall for you to look at. But this is, there's many more levels for this to go through. This isn't a one-shot deal for you to voice your concerns. I think we've heard them. We understand them. And you will have more opportunity if this does indeed move forward from here.
Right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to, for, or against? Seeing no one rise, I close the public hearing. We have a request for road frontage on one lot, 80 feet plus or minus where 100 is required. My only comment to the board is that I feel that we should really be focused on that one lot that doesn't meet the requirements. And I don't necessarily feel we should get bogged down in the other four lots that are all conforming. With that said, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Parrott?
I'll make a motion with respect to this and it's going to be, I'm going to have one stipulation. The motion is to approve the lot, the lot layout as it was presented to us tonight, not the, specifically not the one that was provided to us earlier in, in the mail. Just for clarity, the one, the plan that I'm referring to is the one that has the one 80-foot lot. CO7. CO7. Dated June 21, today, 2011. And my stipulation is that with respect to Note 3, where it says that all calculated, that related calculation should be regarded as being approximate, and my, my stipulation is that 3% shall be what approximate means in this case. Three, plus or minus 3% and lacking. And if they can't do that, the variance is moot. So that's, and that's, that seems to me, if this map is at all accurate, that 3% should be enough, enough leeway to accomplish the objectives.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to-
On the-
Yeah, on the point of the tolerance.
Stipulation?
I would just say that we should not go in a positive direction but a negative direction. In other words, if it comes out to be 85 or 90 feet, it's-
I think the stipulation, I mean, my recommendation with the stipulation be that it cannot be less than 80 feet. Don't even give them the 3% below 80 feet. You say it cannot be-
My, my concern was that if you add it to one, it has to come out of another, but-
Right.
Okay. All right. That's, that's fine.
80-foot minimum.
80-foot, 80-foot minimum after, based on a certified stamp survey plan. Is that acceptable? Okay?
Fine. Thank you.
All right. That's, that's the motion.
I'd like to make a comment.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Lemay's second was for the motion in totality. You're good with the motion now in your second?
Yes.
Okay. And before I have Mr. Parrott speak to the motion, Ms. Eaton?
Oh, I just want to comment that I won't support the motion. I think that the-
We have him speak to his motion first?
Oh, sure, sure. Sorry.
Okay. Your motion, please.
The five criteria are as follows. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The public interest in this case has been expressed this evening, but it's with respect, more with respect, as I understand it, not so much to the specific variance tonight, but with respect to development of the property at all, really. And that, that's beyond the purview of this, this board. Secondly, granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance obviously is to allow the lawful development of property, including subdividing it, dividing it up into lots, as this particular case is. So it, I think it is within the spirit of the ordinance to allow these folks to develop their property within the guidelines provided by the city. Thirdly, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Apparently this property has been undeveloped for quite a long period of time. And I, I think it would be hard to argue that as desirable it is, is to maintain a buffer between the existing homes and the highway, nonetheless, the, the property owners do have a right, provided they follow the rules and regulations and attain variances as necessary to, to develop their property. Granted the variance, fourthly, granting the variance would not diminish the value of surrounding properties. This, I wish someone had presented some information with respect to that tonight, but nothing, nothing has been presented to the board. And so I think for us to speculate on it, having no specific information to refer to is hard to make a, make a judgment either way. So having no information to the contrary, I think we have to assume that it would not diminish the value of surrounding properties. And the unnecessary hardship, the property does have special conditions. It's, it's, special conditions are several. It's, has a large utility easement on it, part of it, anyway. It is right up hard against the highway with all the features that that causes, which is convenience and on the good side, I suppose, and noise on, certainly noise on the bad side. So the property is not easy, necessarily easy to develop because it's, as anyone who's seen it can see, you know, there's ledge and it's irregular in some respects. So that, those sort of balance out. So I think the, given all the factors in front of us, the proposal is reasonable.
Thank you. Your second, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to, just like to add that we are looking at a five-unit subdivision here. It would be nice if it was four, didn't need any variances, but that's not what's on the table in front of us. And the 5-4 may be a moot point anyway, since there are other plans that are, that don't require variances that could have a much more dramatic impact in that area. I think, given that, if, if five units is what will have this done, it's probably the least impact. The butters have another opportunity to go discuss specific detail at planning meetings. And I think that the interests of everybody are fairly well protected here. So that's why I made the motion for the second.
Thank you. Any further comment from the board? Ms. Eaton?
I don't think anybody's discussed that there, I don't think there's hardship here because I think even the plans that were presented here show that there are ways to develop this property without a variance being granted, including three lots or four with the houses there existing rather than the five. Making an assumption that the other intensified developments would actually be approvable without even a survey or wetlands delineation, I think is inappropriate. So I don't see where it meets any of the variance criteria to, to grant a variance for what's in front of us.
Ms. Russo?
I absolutely agree with Ms. Eaton's position. I was going to say that, you know, I don't even think the applicant knows whether or not they even have a hardship. They said they could not supply a survey to us because of the affordability of a survey. But I'm telling you, when four, five lots get developed over there, the cost to the city of Portsmouth, it will be an extreme burden to the health, safety, and welfare because of those houses, we will not be able to collect taxes to cover the expenses of those homes with city services and children and school. So I think it's reasonable to request that a survey be provided so we know exactly what we're talking about here. Because right now, it's maybe, maybe not. And I don't think a hardship has been established here in addition to what Ms. Eaton said, that there are alternatives for this property to be developed as well. So I don't, I don't buy the affordability of a survey because the city of Portsmouth is going to be footing the tax bill for those four or five properties coming down the pike. The least they could do is cut a check for a real survey. So we're looking at a variance with some real numbers.
Thank you. Any further comment from the board? I will be supporting the motion also. I think Mr. Parrott covered it very well. We have four conforming lots that most directly about the neighbors. So the four conforming lots about the neighbors, I understand the concerns about the buffer, but that's never a guarantee. When you buy into that neighborhood, you know there's a lot there that can be subdivided and you know it can happen. And even if it stayed one lot, that person could cut down all the trees if they wanted. So I'm sure it's nice, but I also feel that these lots will be more valuable to the developer if a buffer is maintained. I'm sure he doesn't want everything cut down, then he's trying to sell a lot that stares right at the highway. I'm sure the developer is going to want to maintain as much of a buffer as possible. So I feel, I mean, I'm looking at this variance request as the last lot at the end of this line where they're looking for 80 feet. You have a PS&amp;H easement going through it. You have business district on two sides of it. You have the highway on the other side of it. I feel those are special conditions and I feel, you know, those need to carry some weight. I also look at whether this variance will change the essential character- I also look at whether this variance will change the essential character of the neighborhood. We're going to have four lots conforming at a hundred feet, one at eighty feet. If you look at the tax map, there's a range of street frontage widths for all these lots. There's some that are a little bit over a hundred, and there's many in the seventies and eighties and nineties. So, to have four lots at a hundred and one below a hundred is not a way going to change the essential character of the neighborhood. It's kind of maintaining the rhythm that's there now. So, for those reasons and Mr. Parrott's comments, I feel this is grantable. I'm sure it would be great if we started a survey, but I feel I have enough here to vote on. In terms of the burden on the city, if I can have a burden for four houses, I'm not, I mean, there's all kinds of theories out there as development costs the city more than it brings in tax dollars, but that's not, I feel, part of the criteria for us to be voting on right now. So, for those reasons, I'll be supporting the motion with the one stipulation that Mr. Parrott said, eighty-foot minimum on that fifth lot at the end of the road. I will call for a vote, and it is to grant.
Oh, I'd like to comment one more time.
Okay.
I just want to point out that this is a lot that's not developed, and we're splitting it into an extra lot where it doesn't, it's granting a variance for something that, that isn't required. They could have a three- or lot subdivision or a four-lot subdivision rather than the five, so I don't see how it's supportable when you're starting with a compliant lot and making it noncompliant. That's my last comment.
I will call for the vote, and it is to grant with the stipulation eighty-foot minimum for street frontage on the fifth lot. Ms. Durbin? I'm sorry. I'm reading, I'm just reading the names in order. Sorry. Ms. Eaton?
No.
Mr. Parrott?
Presenting no.
Mr. Juice?
No.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
No.
And the chair votes yes.
Four to two.
Four to two. The petition's been denied. Case six dash seven, petition of Greenbrook LLC owner and Matthew Beebe applicant. Property located at sixty-six dash sixty-eight South Street, Assessor Plan 101, Lot 70, in the zoning district, general residence A. Looking to replace an existing twenty, twenty, twenty-six-foot, four-inch by nineteen-foot, four-inch one-car, one-car garage with a two-car garage in the same footprint. Require a variance from section ten point three-two-one to allow the reconstruction of a nonconformant structure. Variance from section ten point five-two-one to allow a right-side yard setback of one foot plus or minus where ten feet is required. A variance from section ten point five-two-one to allow a rear yard setback of one foot plus or minus where twenty-five feet is required. Is there anyone here to speak to this petition?
Yes. My name is Matthew Beebe. I'm also the owner of Greenbrook LLC and the owner of one of the two condominiums which have been created on this site. I believe if you, if you take a look at either the existing conditions plan or the site plan with the proposed garage, two-car garage, they're virtually the same as the petition asked for. I don't wish to change the footprint of the building, and the drawings that I provided indicate that we would essentially be recreating the existing building as it now stands. The greatest difference, of course, is that we'll be taking a substandard accessory building and building it anew. So, it would have a proper concrete foundation, a concrete slab onto which one could pull a car. And the ancillary and important, I think, added benefit is that we would be able to configure the driveway in such a way that you would effectively create additional off-street parking here. It would add a space in that portion of the new garage, which is not used as a garage bay now, but the, that portion of the building exists, could be used that way if the floor would support the weight of a car. And it is important to note that the floor that's existing in the area where there is a garage bay now is not sufficient to support the weight of a car. So, even though it's a one-car garage now, you cannot pull a car into that space, which it does make the parking, you can see, it's quite a challenge on this lot. You could get four cars in the driveway, but if you happen to be the person who's pulled in first or second, and there's two cars behind you, then getting in and out requires quite a shuffle. In fact, the owner of the unit in front typically parks both of their automobiles in the public lot, which is adjacent to the playground, which is the portion of the, of the abutting property that's listed. The owner is the city of Portsmouth. That's the playground there on South Street in front of the old school. So, one of the things that I hope to accomplish, if we're given a relief in the ability to rebuild the garage and create a second bay, is that it would, you would then be able to get a car in each bay of the garage, and you'd be able to pull a car in front of those garage bays and still have access for both units to get cars in and out without having to go and knock on someone's door and ask them to move their car. So, the parking is, the improved parking would be a benefit both to that property owner and to abutters because it would take two cars out of what is now being used in the public lot and put them in their own driveway. I guess the, it's always, it always seems to be hardest to come up with a hardship, but in some of these older properties in town, and you heard an argument for a property I used to own tonight, which had one of the smallest lots in town. This lot is, is too small to meet the regulations provided by the zoning ordinance, which isn't so much a problem as the location of the garage on the lot. It's built right on the lot line, which is fairly typical in town. If you go through some of the older parts of town, in my neighborhood, in the McNabb, Lincoln Ave neighborhood, there are garages built on the property lines all over that area of town. In fact, I think I spoke to this when I came before the board for a variance for my own property at Lincoln Ave about three years ago. There were six garages within a hundred-yard radius that were all built on the lot lines, and I was one of the few people at the time who had, whose garage had gotten to the point where it just desperately needed to be rebuilt. And I was granted permission to do that, and I'm hoping basically for the same relief here. It would not be a precedent-setting case. The board has already heard these cases before and determined that a new, safer, code-compliant building, easier to maintain, that looks a lot nicer than a piece of property where the paint is peeling is a constant maintenance issue, this really helps the abutters as well as it helps the homeowner. So, the hardship inherent in the property would simply be the location of the building as it was constructed prior to the enactment of the zoning ordinance. From past experience, I think I can speak to the fact that this would not diminish the value of surrounding properties. In fact, I think it would enhance it to, to see this property from any of the angles at any of the abutters' homes, to see a new building here instead of what's there now, which is sagging, and the roof is in danger of collapse in any winter that we have snow and rain like we did last year. So, it's a safety hazard both for the people on the property and perhaps someone behind. The proposed use is not contrary to the ordinance because we're simply trying to have the enjoyment and use of this property. We're offering and proposing to rebuild at our own cost, of course, which will, will provide a benefit in terms of safety and aesthetics to the neighbors as well as the The granting of the variance benefits the public interest. I spoke to the parking issue, which I think is, is more than ancillary. I think that's an important point to consider. And again, just taking an older property that's essentially rotting into the ground and collapsing and replacing it with new, I think, can only be considered a benefit and not something other than that. And granting the variance, I think, does substantial justice. It, it does not harm any of the abutters. I can see that there's no one here to speak on my behalf or against me, so maybe the proof is in the empty auditorium. Perhaps everyone just wants to be home at this point. So, I think it, it does benefit the abutters. Certainly would benefit us to have the additional garage bay space, but it does provide a benefit to the abutters in the sense that it's aesthetically pleasing, and a newer garage piece here that looks good, I think, will help with surrounding property values. Not to say that that's needed in the south end, but if one were to speak to that, I can say that I think it would enhance values rather than detract from them. So...
Thank you. Any questions? Are there any questions from the board? Pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess seeing no one here, I'll shorten it. Anyone to speak to, for, against? No one rising, they're running in. I'll close the public hearing. We have a request to rebuild a garage existing, the existing location, same size. I guess I have one question. Have you spoken with your, the abutters? Well, the city's on one side, so, the rear abutter?
I, well, you know, the house directly behind this property went up for sale about two months ago, and it's in the process of being conveyed, excuse me, being conveyed to a new owner. So, I spoke to the Realtor, but I didn't get a reaction from either the sellers or the buyers.
Okay. Great. See, I missed the first few, so I don't know whose turn it is to make a motion. You guys, it's going to be the honor system right now.
Well, Mr. Chairman, rather than stretch things out, let me, let me make a motion to approve as presented and discussed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
And I'll second, but I would like to put a stipulation on this if it, with the approval of the motion maker, that a gutter system be installed and maintained on the rear side of this garage. So, even though the rear property, since it is on the property line, to reduce or alleviate the runoff onto that property.
Okay. Are you okay with that stipulation? Maker of the motion?
I'm certainly in agreement with that, yes.
All right. Your motion, please.
Point number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. This is in the, in the backyard of one house and backs to the backyard of the next property and a, and a public playground on, on the side, so I think there's, hard to see any real public interest that would be impeded. Granting the variance would not, would observe the spirit of the ordinance, it's certainly in the spirit of the ordinance to allow people to replace something when its useful life is over, and in this case, that's certainly the situation. Thirdly, granting the variance would do substantial justice. This is the case of an overriding public concern, which I don't see, so I think the favor, it's in favor of the property owner. Granting the variance would not diminish the value of surrounding properties, and if anyone has had an opportunity to see the property, you, you know that replacing it can only be a good thing. And the unnecessary hardship test is, is because it's a very small lot, the structure is where it is. As it turns out, it really doesn't negatively affect the, the adjacent park or all the, I would, I would venture to say, the neighbors in the back. So, I think that putting it, putting it where it is is reasonable, and it's almost the only place, given that such a small lot, fifty, basically forty-eight-foot lot at the back where this is located, and, excuse me, it's only, it's only a, it's nominally a fifty-by-hundred foot lot, anyway, so, there aren't a lot of choices. So, it either gets replaced where it is or probably doesn't get replaced. So, I think for all of those reasons, it satisfies the criteria, and we can vote it.
Thank you. Your second, please.
I have nothing to add.
Any further comment from the board? Mr. Grasso?
Thank you. I won't be supporting the motion. I went out to look at this this weekend. The side setback, they're asking for one foot plus or minus next to that chain-link fence. I think it's a lot more to the minus side. That is a city playground. I'd feel more comfortable if this was three or four feet in and three or four feet back from the back property line than the one foot plus or minus, which, as I mentioned, I think is more on the minus side. So, I won't be supporting the motion to replace where, to grant variance to replace where it is.
Thank you. Is there any further comment from the board?
Well, I just want to say that there is a survey, I think, it looks like a survey plan to me, that shows that it's a point four-five foot setback and a point nine-four four setback, not a foot like you're saying.
All right, that's mine.
Right.
And my...
I have to agree with you.
And one other thing, Mr. Chairman, this isn't on a concrete foundation, like they're replacing it to go on an existing foundation. He has proposed to build a new one, and there isn't one here under this current structure. So, if they're doing all that new, I think they could, or the applicant could have proposed something more closer to conformity than a maximum variance.
Mr. Lemay?
Is there any confusion between rebuilding on the existing footprint and granting a one-foot setback? In other words, if this were to be granted, we'd expect the entire building to be a foot back from the line in each direction?
Well, the way it's presented is one foot plus or minus in the same footprint. The board can grant less, they can make a stipulation, minimum of one foot, two foot, three feet.
Where the current chain-link fence is now, there's no way they're going to put that side wall up on his property. They're going to have to do it on the city property.
What he's talking about is when you dig the foundation, you have to overdig, so you'll be digging on...
Yes, should I, should I speak to that?
Sure, I can. If, if you want to try to address that, sure.
My, when I filled out the application, of course, my assumption was that it would be better to appear before the board and ask to put it in exactly the same footprint rather than ask to move it further away. You can see that on the lot that there, it really should be somewhere in that back corner in order to preserve the green space that exists elsewhere. If the board saw fit to give the stipulation that it needed to be moved slightly off the sideline, I would be okay with that. To, to do the foundation along the city side, we could do an offset foundation. We would not have to dig beyond the chain-link fence. You could essentially create a form right up against the edge of the fence where it is now and have a larger footing that extends beyond the inside of the wall. Instead of having a traditional spread footing where the wall is centered, you would have the wall on the edge, and the footing would extend further out, and you would have to put reinforcing bar in there to prevent it from tipping over. But it, I mean, this is sort of thing that has been designed and has been done in the past to affect these sort of difficult areas, but I'm open to moving it slight. I didn't propose that, but if the stipulation were placed to move it a foot away from the lot line, I would be okay with that.
Thank you. It's...
I'm just going by what's presented in front of us.
Yep.
I'm not redesigning his garage or whatever.
You can, you can vote no, or you could throw out a stipulation now and see if the maker and the second want to get on board with that, or we can just move ahead with how it is right now.
Move ahead with that.
I'd wel, I'd welcome a stipulation, but, excuse me.
Second stipulation.
Second, second stipulation besides the gutter, yeah. How about two, how about two feet? Just let me just throw that out for sort of a compromise.
On the back end side?
On both sides, on both, on both the back and the side against the park.
That's fine.
Okay.
Two feet, two-foot minimum.
Okay.
Mr. Juice, the second?
I'm fine with that.
Two-foot minimum, right. Okay?
Any other discussion from the board on the second stipulation added? All right. I will call for a vote. It is to approve with two stipulations, a gutter be installed and maintained along the rear property line on this garage, and a minimum of two-foot setback along the right-side yard and the rear, rear yard. Okay? Mr. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Juice?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Grasso?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Your redesigned garage has been...
How about that?
To apply for an immediate license.
How about that?
That does it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Second. All those in favor?
All right.
All right. adjourned.